So, one thing they asked for was a signed copy of the survey. I believe we submitted that, but I'll just submit another copy of that also. So, number one is an A2 survey of the existing conditions to be signed and sealed. I just submitted that. I believe we still, I think we submitted that with the original application. The proposed driveway does not, is not, is offset from Alexa Drive. And that's true, and the reason is because we essentially don't own the lot next door. We would do that, but again, this is just a private driveway. It's not essentially a road where you would try to line them up. If we could, we would, but we can't. So, we did bring it as close as we could, as possible. Alexa is, Alexandra Drive is a minor road itself, and then ours is even just basically a driveway with two accesses. That's the northern one, so it would be, the traffic would be split between the two. Will sidewalks be installed? We have sidewalks internally throughout the property, so basically in front of our building, around the back, and to the recreation areas. We don't propose any on James Farm Road because there isn't any there right now. If that's something that the town would like to see, I'm sure the applicant wouldn't hesitate to put some in front of just our property, but we wouldn't propose, we're not proposing them right now because there's nowhere for those sidewalks to connect to. He asked that we put street monuments in if the, per the town's standards, and we'll be happy to put them in once the project is approved. And he asked if we meet the MS2. Again, we're, we have a treatment train with primary and secondary treatment structures on site, and we have 1,000 lineal feet of gallery to hold enough water to reduce the amount of discharge from the existing condition by 46 percent at the 100-year storm. I have more copies here, too. So therefore, I believe that we do meet the MS4 permit requirements, which is basically to increase water quality. The cemetery brook is not on the list of impaired body, water bodies, and we'd like to keep it that way. So, we are trying to design something that will increase the water quality and decrease the amount of water that's going to the cemetery brook from today's condition. The site distance should be maintained in, you know, for the intersections to be clear in the future, and the applicant agrees to maintain a good site distance with regular vegetation cutting. So basically, when you come out, left, right, you have to have good, you have to have the minimum site distances, which we have, but we did, we agreed to maintain them in the future. Soil erosion control plan. He asked for a phasing. Again, the plans establish a perimeter. I think he's asking me is why am I putting a perimeter, in the first phase, I'm putting a perimeter silt fence around the whole property? Why don't I just phase it, like, just do the little bit here, a little bit here, and then expand it later on? The reason why is because I like to have, in my first phase, establish basically a limit of disturbance. And what's that? Basically, it's a limit telling the contractors, listen, we're not developing anything outside of this area. Our footprint of development is basically in here. There's no need for excavators or anything to be outside of this area. So, I like to establish that boundary with that, that silt fence going around the property or basically the limit of disturbance as the first phase, as kind of like a visual, a visual limit for the contractor not to go outside of that area. And that's basically why I do that. He asked, the narrative does call out using some pesticides and herbicides for any invasive species. The narrative also details that the pesticides and herbicides and the person that should be, that's going to be implementing and be a licensed person and to be approved by the engineer. I will also, before I approve that person in those, those implements or that work, will forward a copy of the plan, what they would like to do to the town engineer and have him approve it prior to me approving that person. I'll agree to that. The size of the riprap in the plunge pool is stated as standard riprap. He wants to know specifically the size. So, standard riprap is the nine to six inches in diameter. It's like this big. And that's basically the best size for soil erosion control, and that's what we're going to put on that level spreader, so that any kind of sediment that's still carried in the water gets, gets scrubbed out by that size of riprap. And standard is basically nine to, six to nine inches. Over nine inches is considered large, below six inches is considered small. So, the word standard means nine to six inches. The plunge pool overflow appears to be a level spreader detail in plunge pool. He said, well, I'm not reading his comment very well, but he's basically saying that there's two details that he feels that are not saying the same thing, so. Okay.
We've submitted these into evidence. I don't want to have them go through.
Yeah, alright.
And if you have any questions on it, you can certainly ask them.
Okay. Again, no, you can stop me anytime.
I like, I like the way you think.
So, if there's any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Pat Rose, the architect.
It's going to be the traffic.
Oh, traffic engineer, sorry. Thank you, have a good night.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kermit Hua. I'm the traffic engineer for this project. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with over 20 years of experience in traffic engineering. For this iteration of the submission, I updated the, a previous traffic study prepared for this site. Now, we have 116 units. I looked at the IT trip generation menu and estimated the number of trips that are going to be generated during peak hours. The number are 35 during the morning peak hour and 45 during the afternoon peak hour. I also looked at the three area intersections and two side driveway intersections in terms of their traffic operation during peak hours. The findings are that, you know, when these apartments are in place, all those locations will mostly operate at level of service A, B, or C, with the exception of...
Can you use the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, your back here.
With the exception of one approach at level of service D, which is still acceptable. So, we're looking at the mostly A, B, and C, A, B, C, and one D approach. So, there is no problem in terms of traffic delays during peak hours. At the two driveways, in terms of the delays that are going to be expected by people exiting the driveway, which is the main, you know, the longest delay at that location, because the northbound, southbound, people traveling on James Farm Road, they don't have to stop. For those vehicles, we are looking at 8.7 to 11.6 seconds during peak hours per vehicle, so not significant amount. The other thing I looked at, Manny touched on, is, touched on is the side, sideline distances, looking from both directions, from both driveways for vehicles exiting the site. So, these, the finding is that the both, you know, all side distances, which is essentially four distances to driveways, they all meet DOT requirements, and based on the 85th percentile speed we collected on James Farm Road. So, that's about all I have, until the commission have any questions.
Mr. Henrich.
Did you say during peak hours, there would only be 35 trips?
That is correct, morning peak hour.
So, 116 units hypothetically, 232 people going to work at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning. You're saying there's only be 35 vehicles?
That is correct, during peak hour. The reason that happens is not all people, you know, use the driveway during the same hour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question I have is, have you guys checked the peak hours with flood middle school, with chapel school, with people going to work? What, how you came up with this, I don't know.
The peak hours, it's the usual, like commuter hours. Obviously, in the morning peak hour, it sort of overlaps with the, you know, the peak hours of the schools. The traffic counts were counted on weekdays from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So, that essentially covers the peak commute hours. For schools, they let out early in the afternoon, you know, probably two, even high schools a little bit later, so we didn't catch that one. But again, during that hour, 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, the roads are not that busy, you know, as far as commuters or general public is concerned.
Okay. And the morning, would you guys check with the schools coming in in the morning? Did anybody do anything up there with that?
Well, every cars that are counted, you know, if they are school traffic, they're included in the intersection turning movement, unless, you know, those school traffic that are not going to be, you know, affected by, by this development. So, essentially, we can't, just so you know, the intersection, we counted to the north, we counted at the intersection of James Farm Road and Armstrong Road, so that's way north. Then, in the middle, we counted Oronok Lane, which goes all the way to Sokolski. To the south, we counted the intersection of James Farm Road and Chapel Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Solhavy.
Thank you, sir. Please explain whatever findings you have on James Farm and Armstrong. What brings me concern there is where some of the numbers, you know, might not seem unreasonable. That is a one-lane road that barely two cars can get through. So, any increase in traffic in that area is just going to be magnified by it, and that's the main access way to get to Route 8 from there. So, I'm very concerned about any traffic that would approach that particular intersection.
Are you talking about on James Farm Road approach or on?
James, where James Farm...
Armstrong Road approach.
Where James Farm and Armstrong come together, it's basically you, you come right where Stratford and Shelton border each other.
Right.
And you're going right along a pond. It's a very, very tight area, and it's basically, you have to be down to almost a very, very small rate of speed in order to, for two cars to pass safely in there. It's not really a two-lane road at that point. So, I'm just concerned about what type of analysis was done as to what the impact on that particular intersection, because it's such a reduced capacity area that I, at least that I would classify it in that manner.
Yeah, I did look at the accident records, you know, along James Farm Road, actually, from Shelton Town Line all the way to Chapel Street. That, that covers the intersection of a James Farm Road with Armstrong Road, obviously. The records show for the four-year period from, you know, 2013, 14, 15, and 16, we had eight accidents from the Shelton Town Line to Oronok Lane, which is where, you know, the site is about. Just let me look at, they're, they're quite, actually quite a bit of, among those eight accidents on the northern portion, I would say, on James Farm Road, most of the accidents were fixed objects. In other words, people like running off the road, hitting light poles or walls. We have three fixed object accidents and three moving accidents, that's, you know, with animals. One head-on and one side swipe accidents during those four years. So...
So, basically says exactly the problem that I was just describing there. It's a very, very tight road, so you're going to have side swipes, pitting, people hitting unmoving objects, and of course, there's wildlife in the area as well.
Right. I, I, I understand it is a winding road. I drove all the way to the Shelton Town Line. But in terms of traffic capacity, you know, we, the traffic capacity itself, A, B, C, they don't really reflect the geometries of the road. It only looks at the capacity of an intersection, in other words, you know, whether the road is 10 feet wide or 14 feet wide. It's not reflected in the level of service. I see your point, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about the mic.
Don't worry, we'll send you the bill.
Okay, he lost, I got it. It just came unscrewed from the podium. Tom, you can fix these kind of things. You're good at, you're a handyman. Alright. Well, why don't I get the architect up at this point, if that's okay with you all? This is Pat Rose. He's a principal of Rose and Tiso.
Do you have anything to say?
Thank you. Pat Rose from Rose Tiso and Company, licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. Just briefly go over the site again quickly, just, I know that Manny went through it quite detailed. That are 15.5 acre site. We are putting the 116 units on, which is in a building that is basically 420 feet long by 66 foot wide. It is four stories in height of residential units above a parking level. Parking level is partially buried because the, there's no, you can't see the parking level from James Farm Road. Grade comes down as you go across the site, and you can see it and access it from the lower level of the site. What we have are 29 units per floor. Five of them are two-bedroom units and 24 of them are one-bedroom units. So, that gives us 20 two-bedroom units and 96 one-bedroom units. The two-bedroom units are 1,300 square feet, and the one-bedroom units are 740 square feet approximately. So, our density on the overall 15.5 acre site is 7.45 units per acre, and the building coverage of the 27,000 square foot footprint is 4.1 percent for building coverage. Then, the overall impervious coverage of the site is 14.35, so almost 15 percent, so 85 percent of the site is pervious. We provided 215 parking spaces on the site, a third of them being underneath the building, the other, the other third or so, two-thirds, being exterior to the building. Derived that number by providing two spaces per two-bedroom units and one and a half spaces per each one-bedroom unit. That gives us a requirement of 204. We've been able to provide 215 spaces, so we satisfy that with 11 spaces extra. Building itself is 86 feet back from the property line along James Farm Road, and then we're 88 feet back from the side property lines, and the rear property line is, you know, significant since it goes all the way down to the wetlands on the other side of the 15, 15 acre site. Manny explained that we have two entrance drives. All of the driveways are, have a maximum grade of 5 percent, so that we're coming down 5 percent and then down again, then back up at 5 percent, with access here and here to the parking underneath the building. In that area underneath the building, we have three stairways for access up, and then two elevators in the center core for access. Go to the floor plan. We have, in the center core, two elevators and a stairway, parking spaces, and then a stairway and a stairway at either end of the building. Typical floor plan, again, you have your center core in this location, other stairway, one-bedroom units, one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units on the, on the outside, and in the middle, there's a two-bedroom unit also. That's opposite the entrance. So, pretty simple plan. What we've done on the outside of the building is to break it up vertically such that we have townhouse units essentially. They're row, look like row houses. They all have a variety of materials that are being used on those, whether it be brick, stucco, clabbered, and then there are areas of stone that we've used around the main entrance and lower on some of these stair towers. So, we've broken that up and broken the building up so that it looks like individual townhouses. As you look from the James Farm Road elevation and from the elevation on the backside of the building, where we have the parking below. The way the building's being constructed is a fully sprinklered building. This parking level will be separated from the residential level by a one-hour rating vertically between the two. Each one of these apartments will be separated by a one-hour rating. Each one of the floors that we have, of the four floors, will be separated with a one-hour rating. So, essentially, every, every apartment's encapsulated with a one-hour rating to protect it, and they're all sprinklered. What we've done on the up, on the upper level with the roof is we've put that fourth floor into a mansared roof. That helps lower the height of that overall building and works it into the architecture of the windows being gables and ensets into that roof line. So, we're trying to reduce that roof line. Pretty much it for my presentation. If any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission? Mr. Henrich.
So, it's, it's probably a nice-looking building if you're going to build it like in the city, but being that this is a, what I would call a rural thinly populated neighborhood, can you speak how this fits into the character of the neighborhood? Because I'm, I'm not seeing it.
Fits into the character of the neighborhood and that the architecture is, you know, is...
I'm talking size, structure.
Size and structure. It doesn't fit into the neighborhood of, you know, of...
Not at all.
No, but 8-30G does not, does not talk to me. Doesn't talk to me.
Please, please keep it quiet.
The 8-3G does not speak to that.
Possibly, but... Sorry. Possibly, and that, I guess that'll probably end up being determined in the courts, but I have a hard time seeing this thing in that neighborhood. So, yeah, just me.
Mr. Solhavy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, you mentioned sprinklers and so on. As you're no doubt aware, the, one of the great concerns that this board had with other 8-30G projects was the safety concern specifically regarding fire and so on. I know, obviously, that would, the proposed development's close to a fire department, but then again, whenever you're considering the density, a, a large number of people living in a very dense area, especially one that's abutting a forest, lots of woods, and if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe, I'm not sure if there's fire hydrants that far up. I mean, you might be able to talk to it better than I can. You know, obviously, it's of concern, and so what can you tell us about what precautions have been taken to ensure that it's a safe living environment if you're going to have a large number of people living in that area?
As I said, we're having a fully sprinklered building. That includes, the parking area below it needs to be sprinklered. Any attic spaces within that building have to be sprinklered. Each one of the apartments is sprinklered. If, there'll be tests run on the water line to make sure that we have the correct pressure that we need for the height of the building. If there's not, then we would have to put a fire pump in. So, we will meet, be able to meet the pressure, and what they require is the certain pressure at the most remote 1,500 square feet in the building. So, that's what they designed a fire, fire sprinkler system on. So, that will be provided. And also, we have provided one-hour ratings between all the apartments, all the corridors, and all the stair towers and the elevators are two hours based on their piping over four stories. So, we've met all of the building and fire codes can be met to provide safety for this building.
Considering its proximity to the city of Shelton, and it's somewhat distant from the other outlying fire stations in Stratford, should mutual aid be required, would they be able to, would Shelton fire trucks be able to get through the James Farm Armstrong Road intersection and that very tight road there?
Fire trucks usually get through wherever they need to get to.
I'm, no doubt, but I, I've never seen, I'm just wondering if whatever apparatus that the city of Shelton has right now, would they be able to make that turn and be able to come up that road?
I can't speak to it specifically, you know, as to whether they can make the turn or not. I could have the traffic engineer.
Mr. Solhavy, if you would like, we have our fire marshal, Brian Lampard, in-house. Maybe we can bring him in, and Mr. Lampard, could you come up and help us out with this I know you're here for other reasons, but...
Good evening, Brian Lampard, fire marshal in town of Stratford. To answer your question, yes, the apparatus can make it down that, that roadway. I do agree that that roadway is tight, and with congestion, it's very possible that that road could be a parking lot at times during rush hour.
What is the, the closest firehouses in proximity to that? We know, obviously, the Oronok Station is. So, then, obviously, would be, at least on the Stratford side, it would be Huntington Road. Do you know what the closest one on the Shelton side would be?
Probably the Huntington Firehouse, Huntington Center.
Okay.
Firehouse.
Still quite a distance.
It's a distance. It's quite a distance.
And if, of Stratford's trucks, in that, just for example, obviously, you might not be familiar with everything that Shelton has, but on that road where James Farm and Armstrong come together, do they, can they go at full speed there, or do they have to reduce their speed in order to go through there?
Well, they would obviously have to reduce their speed.
By how much, do you know?
I, I couldn't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question. The one-hour rating that they're giving all the way around each apartment, is that sufficient, or can you, in layman's terms, give us a better explanation?
Based on, based on the, the drawings that we receive, that I've seen, yes, that would, the one-hour would, would be sufficient with the sprinkler system, and that is a requirement anyways.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vacola.
Good evening, Mr. Lampard. I had a question about the fire hydrants up there. Wasn't there a problem a while back? Was there a fire up there that you guys need to pump water?
That is correct. That is correct. Currently, this area has no fire hydrant. So, in order to build this project, in order to get their sprinkler system in there, they would have to run a water line from, it's quite a distance. So, they're going to have to do some digging.
And who would be in charge with providing that water line?
Well, I would assume that the builder would be, that would be their responsibility.
But right now, there's no fire hydrants down there, and like I said, there was a problem where you guys had a house fire where they had to pump.
Correct. We would have to, we had to pump several thousand feet of, of water.
And that fire, that house was not like this here, the size?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Solhavy.
That mean, okay. Would it be possible for the commission to get, probably from the fire department, some sort of map, just so that we understand the distances of any fire hydrants or any waterways that have to be going, so we can fully understand the situation?
Mr. Lampard, do you think we could, we can obtain that?
I can give you a map, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just so we're clear, the, this project could not be approved, and I'm not asking this commission to approve it unless the developer obtains water, a water line up to the project, and unless, as Pat said, this building is sprinkled, has sprinklers, I should say. And therefore, it's usually up to the town to, I don't know in your town who does it, but usually in Shelton, the mayor decides, along with the fire board, where to put the fire hydrants. So, there will be water in the street, and then there, I can't tell you exactly, I wouldn't be able to tell you where that fire hydrant would go, but that's something the town usually decides. So, you would have a, you, before this could ever be built, you'd have a, a water line, and you kind of dictate where the fire hydrant goes. So, I just wanted to ask that, I wanted to point that out. The other thing...
Excuse me, Mr. Billis. Mr. Henrich?
Just as far as that fire hydrant, you know, I'm assuming the water required to properly supply the homes, let alone a, a fully sprinklered, active system, would be fairly immense, no?
I, I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to answer that, but I'll let Pat or the engineer, one of them, can, do you guys know the answer, what size water line you would need? Manny?
The size of the water line is going to be dependent on the pressure that we can get with the new water line coming up James Farm Road. The pressures required at the top floor, at the farthest fifteen hundred square feet, I believe, is about eighty PSI, and that has to be determined hydraulically to make sure that you can get that all the way up there. So, you know, once we have worked with the town, where the hydrants go, we have to work with the, the water company and determine what kind of pressure they can provide us. And from there, we can design our sprinkler system, and if worse comes to worse, we have to put a fire pump in associated with that.
And that fire pump would go on the property?
Yes, fire pump would go on. It would be, the fire pump would be to service the building itself.
So, typically, what size is a fire pump building?
The fire pump is essentially a large generator with a pump, ten by ten, you know, building.
And so, the fire pump would probably need some type of means to, to run it?
Correct. It usually has a generator associated with it so that it does not have to worry about building power being cut off or anything like that. Could be either gas or oil.
So, that's another opportunity for the whole system to fail.
No, it's, it, it certainly is if you didn't maintain it, but it's something that gets maintained all the time and red runs and exercises all the time.
Rain, water, storms, snow, whatever it may be, the potential is there that the pump could fail and...
Pump's always, always working. It's, it's run like a generator. They're always exercising, always exercising.
Generators fail.
They fail, and they, they, they need to get fixed.
Yeah.
Everything breaks.
In the middle of a fire, the, the pump fails, the building burns. It's a safety issue. It's a significant safety issue, and you're kind of relying...
There are fire, there are fire pumps...
You're putting two hundred people...
...on every building in the city of Bridgeport.
I'm sure there are.
That are multi-story.
Well, you're putting two hundred people's lives on, you know, on stake for a, for a gas-powered motor in, in the hopes that it'll fire when it's needed. Seems like a safety issue to me. Significant one.
No, I appreciate your concern, sir, but the cases that I've read have said that the denial of affordable housing plans because of safety concerns for emergency vehicles, access for fire trucks and whatnot, has to be more than a theoretical possibility. And I know you're asking theoretical possibilities, it has to be more than that. I, I can't disagree with you, all kinds of, a meteorite can hit this earth, and you know, that's, that's a theoretical possibility, but it's not a probability, it's not likely. And I think that's what we have to kind of talk about.
Yeah, I, I would disagree.
We, we can respectfully disagree. I mean, that's just what the cases say, that's what I'm telling you.
I understand.
At this point, I've presented an overview from the engineer, from the architect, and from the traffic consultant. You've heard from me. I don't mind letting the people behind me speak as long as I have time, either tonight or, or another, you know, at the next meeting, I think Jay and I talked about. I know it's nine-thirty, so I don't mind, unless you have a question you want to ask me or my team, I don't mind letting the public speak, and then, as long as I'm afforded the opportunity to rebut.
Yes, you will have that opportunity.
Thank you.
But before we go any further, I'm going to ask for a two-minute recess. Okay, thank you, we'll be back in two minutes.
No problem, thank you very much, sir.